This is Gillis, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share how our factor is happening at our school. I'm proud to introduce a few of our outstanding Chapman Wolfhounds who put these tools into practice each day. Maya Westfield. Give away Maya, there you go. James Sato. Sedan Alizzi, it's also her birthday. Matilda Bingham. Vihon Patel? Vivan, I'm sorry, Vivan. Vivan Patel. And Elliot Maxim. These students truly, go ahead, round of applause, thank you. These students truly embody the spirit of positivity, acceptance, creativity, and kindness. I would also like to thank Mrs. Prendergast for helping the students and preparing them tonight. And now our students will lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Okay, cool.
Come here, guys. Nice job.
Great job, you guys.
Nice job.
Great work. Happy birthday. Great job.
Okay, you guys get in the front.
Squeeze into the back.
Can you step up a little bit?
Stand up here, right here, perfect. Are we good?
Very nice.
Thank you, guys.
You seriously are going to use this sand. It makes so much more sense.
Thanks, God.
Approval of the October 14th regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Valentine, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. De Silva. Call the roll, please.
Was that Mrs. Messick, I think?
It was both, it doesn't.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
She called De Silva, okay. Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gillis?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Approval of October 28th regular work session meeting minutes, is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Rigby, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Messick. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gillis?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. And approval of agenda as presented for this evening, is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. De Silva, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rigby, call the roll, please.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gillis?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. And now for awards and recognitions.
Mr. Boni, please.
Good evening, everyone. Typically, at this time, we do our Golden Shamrocks, and Ed Pitnacki is here, but he is not here tonight, so I've asked Dr. Schwanke to help me with passing out the awards. Ed founded the Golden Shamrock Award in 1990 to recognize those staff members who've made outstanding contributions to our district and have had an impact on those around them. To start us out tonight, I'd like to introduce the principal of Grisel Middle School, Andy Wilkinson, who will say a few words on behalf of Sean Kazer, our first award winner.
Good evening, Dr. Marshhausen, Board President Gillis, and members of the board. First of all, it's going to be hard to follow that last group, and I feel like I should have memorized this whole thing, but we're going to go with the script, okay? As Mr. Boni just said, my name is Andy Wilkinson, I'm the principal of Grisel Middle School. It's a privilege to be here tonight to share a few words about our eighth grade social studies teacher, and this year, seventh grade as well, Mr. Sean Kazer. Sean Kazer is a talented, dedicated educator who provides students with unforgettable learning experience, and it is these experiences that truly set him apart. I would like to highlight just one of these experiences that has left students with lifelong memories of eighth grade social studies at Grisel. In 2002, Mr. Kazer led his students on an educational journey as they attempted to get the bullfrog named the state amphibian. Some might ask, what does this have to do with an eighth grade social studies class? The answer is that the true reason for this undertaking was to engage students in learning about the understanding of the legislative process by doing. Mr. Kazer could have taken the traditional path and simply lectured and had classroom discussions centered around the process, but not Sean. Mr. Kazer's journey with the bullfrog went on for many years, and in 2010, with a compromise with another middle school who wanted a spotted salamander as the state amphibian, the bullfrog was officially named the state frog of Ohio. But wait, the Grisel connection with the bullfrog did not stop there. In 2021, Mr. Kazer and a different set of students continued Project Bullfrog, as the bullfrog license plates were made available for purchase with part of the proceeds going to support a state wildlife habitat fund. So if you see a bullfrog license plate as you drive around the city of Dublin, you know who's responsible. In addition to this direct contribution in these undertakings, Mr. Kazer has also worked to make Grisel a Purple Star school, restocked our pond through an eighth grade project, created a celebration of former president Jimmy Carter and his 100th birthday, coordinated student research and presentations used in naming Elementary School 15, and led professional development in book studies with our staff. Not only is Mr. Kazer loved and appreciated by his students, he also has the respect of his colleagues throughout the district. I'm going to read a couple of these comments shared by other educators and parents. Mr. Kazer's innovative approach not only engages students, but also leaves a lasting impact on their educational journey. Sean has a knack for making his students' learning experiences memorable and impactful, not just on the students, but on the community. Sean's a teacher that places students in relevant, real-life learning situations that create lifelong memories. Sean Kazer, an exemplary educator, who has the uncanny ability to shine a positive light on his students, their work, Grisel Middle School, and our entire district. He is a positive, inspiring, and his students love him. In my 30-plus years of teaching, Sean is one of the most talented educators I have ever come in contact with. His creativity and application of content to real life excites and engages students in ways that are not often seen. I've often told people that Sean could get students to run through walls. Through Sean's vision, students have experienced the rare gift of legacy. Their contributions to the naming process will resonate in a building that will stand for generations, embodying their pride and connection to their community. I'll just say, from my standpoint, it's a privilege to work with Sean each and every day. He embodies the growth mindset and what we ask of our students. Every year, he looks for different ways to connect, different ways to change what he does in his classroom, and I'll give you one of the highest compliments I think you could get. I have an eighth grade son myself, and I would want him in Sean Kazer's classroom, 100%. So thank you, Sean, for all you've given to Grisel students and the community of Dublin. It's with great pleasure that I recognize you as Dublin City Schools' Golden Shamrock recipient.
Well, this is just a wonderful surprise. Dr. Marshhausen, President Gillis, members of the board. First, let me say, thank you all for agreeing to have me come and do this, and I know, this might be a little unorthodox, but I have gift cards for everyone to get a bullfrog tattoo. You can pick that up on your way out. That way, you can really get behind the project. So, seriously, it's really amazing. I can't believe that, like, every time that I get a paycheck, I can't believe that you guys pay me to do this. I mean, I still want you to, but it is an amazing ride. It doesn't feel like work at all. It feels like, just, I've always been in school, always having fun, interacting with the kids, and it's amazing how 30 years can just really fly by. This is my 30th year, and it doesn't feel like it at all. At some point, as an educator, you get to this point where you're like, there's probably more days of teaching behind me than there is in front of me. And you often question whether or not you've left a legacy, what kind of imprint have you left on kids? Do they remember any of these things? But I feel pretty good, that I feel like this is a great award, I love winning it, it's something that is a true honor for me, as I think about going forward in the next, you know, five, 10 years, or whatever it might be. Have you guys ever spent any time around eighth graders? They can drain you. But by the end of the day, it is a really, really good tired. And so it's been a privilege to be tired every day and have an impact on these kids. So thank you very much for the award.
And for our second award winner, it's my honor to introduce the principal at Thomas Elementary, Melissa Garris, who will say a few words about Megan Orem, our next award winner.
My name is Melissa Garris, and I'm the principal at Thomas Elementary. I am thrilled to be here on behalf of Megan Orem, who is an intervention specialist at our school. As many of you know, the world of special education can be magical and sometimes complicated, and Megan is our lead intervention specialist at Thomas, which means she is the captain of that ship for our teachers that she works with. What you'll see that Megan does is not just things that affect the students in the four walls of her classroom, but much further beyond that. Megan supports her colleagues, she makes paraprofessional schedules, she does preschool transition meetings, she helps cover APE field trips, she does all of these behind-the-scenes things that helps make a large department of special education run. But the reason she was nominated was because of the impact she has on the students that she serves. The way our caseloads are organized at Thomas, Megan happens to serve our youngest students with disabilities, and that often means that she's the very first intervention specialist that they will work with. And many times, she's guiding families through that new and sometimes complicated process of, like, tiptoeing into the world of special education. Many families who have been in that experience with Megan speak to the way she's a guiding light, she's their point person, she offers them support and explanation to all of the new, very official business that they have with signing documents and attending meetings. And that's not even mentioning the care that she provides for their children. The most moving line in Megan's nomination form was that the family feels comforted to know that their child is cared for just as much at school as she is at home. Megan is supportive, she is kind, she has an impact on everyone that she serves, and we are so proud of her for winning the Golden Shamrock Award in the month of November. Congratulations, Megan.
Thank you for everyone and the nomination. It's truly an honor to be given to it. It's something, you know, in Dublin that you look forward to and see other staff members receive. Being an intervention specialist is something different every day. Your schedule is built and then changed on a consistent basis to meet the needs of those kids and the staff that we service. The students are amazing, and to watch them grow and to learn confidence in their learning and their educational journey, as well as helping the families with that, is just something truly honorable that I enjoy here at Dublin City Schools. So for that, thank you for the opportunity.
Arin, as we recognize our girls' golf team.
Good evening, everybody. I actually was just asking Mr. Butcher, I think, this is my sixth year as principal at Jerome, and I think this is the sixth time we've been here with the girls' golf team. And I asked if some of the golfers had been here all four times, and you've been here all four times, right? So, they're going to come over here in a second, and Mr. Schwanke is going to come up. But one of the things, I had the opportunity to speak to a couple of parents while the golf, golf was in a different venue this year, so it was a little bit different, it was a little further away than being down at Ohio State, and it was on a Monday, Monday, Tuesday. And one of the things, as I was, had the opportunity to talk to parents, is, I think we, this is the sixth time I've been here with you, we kind of all take it for granted, and I don't think we realize how hard it is to maintain a standard and achieve at a level to make it to a state championship, to even participate. So, I think it's a credit to Mr. Butcher and the girls on the team that they continue to stay hungry, and they continue to grind, and they continue to find joy in the process and not get caught up in the outcome. And I super appreciate that, and I can just say that it's always an honor and a pleasure to be here, and I am super proud of all of you, and I enjoy watching you. I'm going to miss a couple of you, you're going on to bigger and better things, we just had a signing last week, and two of our athletes are headed off to Rutgers and Kent State, and I'll let Mr. Butcher speak to that more, but that just speaks to the level and the program that we have at Jerome. So, without further ado, and with many thanks, I call up Mr. Schwanke to introduce Mr. Butcher and the girls.
I'm going to be short. My name is Jay Schwanke, I'm the athletic director at Jerome High School, and I am very, very proud of all of these ladies over here and their coach. It's been a fantastic season. Everything that goes into it, though, is plenty. The early mornings of getting up and getting on that van and going out to compete for Dublin Jerome High School, all of the work in the offseason that they put in, there really isn't an offseason for them. They're just constantly at it, and this is an elite group of players here. They had an incredible season, they won the OCC Cardinal, they won the sectional, they won the Central District. And in the rich tradition of Dublin Jerome Girls Golf, this is the first team to have gone undefeated in the regular season. They went 234-0. So, sorry if I stole that one from you, Coach, I apologize, but he'll be able to make up the ground here. So, I'm very proud of you ladies, it was an outstanding season. I know that the end, it really would have been nice to be at the top of the podium, but they make us proud nonetheless. So, wanted to introduce their coach, Coach Butcher. He's an outstanding coach, he's elite, and we're very lucky to have him. So, I'm very proud of everybody standing up here at this time.
Good evening, I'm C.D. Butcher, I'm the girls' golf coach and teach at Jerome. Thank you, everybody who's sitting around this circle here for having us. This is a group of girls that deserves recognition and a sport that doesn't get a lot of recognition. So anytime we can get them in front of people, anytime I can get them in front of people, I'd like to say a good, a couple of good things about them. The whole our factor thing with those kids was so good, I was hoping I could maybe throw something in there, like wing it, but these girls don't press pause, they just kill it. So, I'll go with my regular words. So, this year, we returned two of our six players from last year's state championship team. It was the best year statistically that we had ever had, and had a lot of new faces, wasn't really sure where we were going. We knew we were going to be good, there was rumors that some eighth graders coming in were going to be good, and we had some returning players, and they did nothing but excel all season long. Like Jay said, we started the season out, we went undefeated for the first time in the regular season. We did win sectionals by about 40 strokes, and we won districts. We were the state runner-up in Division One Girls Golf. Beyond that, we have numerous, I won't list all the records, but it was a total record-breaking year as far as stats go. And all that's great, but it's just a great group of girls. It's more than a team, it's more, it's a family, we spent a lot of time together. Hopefully, there's a lot of memories that they will share. And not winning a state title, I don't think that really matters. We truly had a goal, and that was to come prepared, they prepared like no other, and just dominated all year long. All right, we just had one day where somebody just played a little bit better, we didn't lose it. But, I'd like to introduce these girls and say just a couple of quick things about them. I will start with my two freshmen. I have Adella Palaski. Adella was all OCC and all Central Ohio as a freshman. We have freshman Nikitha Suresh, another freshman who earned all OCC and all Central Ohio. We've only had, in our esteemed program, I think, seven girls total in my 20 years who have made all Central Ohio as a freshman, so big shoes to fill right there, awesome job. I have senior Caitlin Mundweiler, take a step forward, Caitlin. Caitlin just, she's not going to do it. She sometimes is a little stubborn. Caitlin just committed to Center College, and she was all OCC and all Central Ohio. And then we have two more seniors, we have Alexa Prettyman. There she is. She's a four-year varsity athlete who's been at the state championship all four years, and she was first-team all OCC and first-team all Central Ohio, and she was last year's state medalist runner-up, and she is attending Kent State University for golf. And we have Ellie Hue, another four-time athlete, varsity athlete. She is a three-time first-team OCC, or Central Ohio, in four years for OCC. She was all-state three years, first team or second team, so they consider that all Ohio. She's going on to Rutgers to continue her golf career. They've heard this three times this week, but I love this stat, so these two have played in 89 varsity matches over their four years, and 64 times of their 84 matches, they won, and 15 times, they came in second. So we're talking a very healthy win percentage for team victories. So, one of the best teams that I've ever had, one of the best teams as far as chemistry and friendships, so thank you very much for letting me say a few words about them. Ladies and gentlemen, 2024 Jerome Lady Kels.
Congratulations, good choice.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Jay, you want to get in this?
All right, we have Mr. Melody with us for our update on TOELS.
Good evening, Dr. Marshhausen, President Gillis, members of the board. Attached to the board docs is the November TOELS Career Tech update, so I'll highlight a few items on it for you and see if you have any questions. So first of all, there is a chart in there showing the growth in enrollment over the last four years. The enrollment from Dublin has grown by 90% over the last four years, from 135 students to 253 students. So, we are seeing tremendous growth throughout the whole Career Tech program during that timeframe. And to meet that demand, we have added sections in pre-nursing, welding, construction, cybersecurity, cosmetology, auto technology, and career exploration academies. So we are continuing to develop new programs and continue to plan for the growth in the future. Along with that growth on main campus, there has been considerable growth with students with IEPs, and we are working hard to meet the needs of those students and working with the home districts as well. The facility update, to continue to meet that demand, we are continuing this process of working with architect Fanning and Hawley, Fanning and Hawley, and construction manager Rasili Construction. We are planning the addition of two areas, welding construction programs, 36,000 square-foot lab facility for that, as well as a new designated area for health science programs and dedicated area for our early childhood program. Those will be added on to the main building as well. More to come on that in the future. Something to note for all the students in high school, 10th grade students, sophomores, we have the open house plan for tours for the facility of November 21st through the 26th, for all sophomores to be able to come out and visit the facility. And then we also have launch night, open house in the evening on December 5th, for parents and students to come out and explore programs as well. You can mark your calendars, you'll be getting an invite for December advocacy town hall with Mike Duffy, chancellor of higher education for the state of Ohio. Dr. Hoodley will be hosting that in December, and invites will be coming out soon. And then lastly, you can mark your calendar for the Third Annual TOELS Scoreboard Appreciation Dinner, that will be Wednesday, April 23rd, at 6:00 PM. It's a little bit later than in past years, just due to scheduling and trying to avoid spring breaks for all the districts and give students time to prepare. We do have the TOELS board meeting this coming Thursday, so if there's any questions or items you'd like me to bring forward, please let me know. Any questions on the report this evening?
I have just a quick ask, I guess. You mentioned the increase in students with IEPs. Can you keep us updated on how TOELS is working with the district to meet those students' needs?
Yes.
In the future, let us.
Yes, I will ask about that at the meeting again this week, and I know Dr. Marshhausen and I, we're trying to coordinate some time to get together to have discussions around that as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Melody.
All right, thank you, and have a good evening.
We have no one signed for public participation tonight, so we will move on to Board of Education Committees.
Do you want to go first? Okay, I can go first, but I have, I have three, so I'll try to speak quickly. So, the academic subcommittee met on October 28th. The team outlined the teaching and learning board approval requests for 24, 25, including the middle school academic programs and high school academic programs and pathways in November and December. You'll see the high school changes on today's agenda for first reading. Regarding pathways, Jen Hinderer spoke about opening up internships to students beyond the walls of Emerald Campus, so that more students across the district can graduate with that experience. PK through 5, ELA resource adoption in January and February. The district is currently piloting two potential literacy resources, which are My View and Benchmark. The district is preparing for all-day kindergarten. Three teams had the opportunity to visit three districts with existing all-day kindergarten. They also had two days of discussion or reflection. Principals identified issues to dive deeper into, and the three work teams will process the information that they've gathered and put together a guidebook. There will be changes to the 6-12 schedule. The goal is to increase efficiency in the system, which will translate into more efficiency with staffing. My second report, you guys can let me know if you have questions, but I'm just going to keep going on if I don't hear any. The PTO leadership group met on Thursday, November 14th. Several Dublin-area nonprofit organizations attended the meeting to showcase the work that they do in the community and how they might partner together with PTOs and other organizations. On November 11th, I attended the annual business meeting of the OSBA Delegate Assembly as the DCS delegate. Major Michael Antonas of the Ohio National Guard spoke about the decrease in propensity to serve and the benefits of the Ohio National Guard Scholarship Program. Paul Kraft, Superintendent of Public Instruction, spoke briefly about some of the changes the State Board of Education has experienced over the last three years. He also introduced Dana Pinkney, who is the Ohio Teacher of the Year. Mary Cleveland Brown was voted in as the 25 OSBA president-elect. Three amendments were proposed to the OSBA Legislative Platform. Two came through the Legislative Platform Committee, and one was introduced on the floor. In case you don't know, the Legislative Platform guides OSBA on what they can lobby for or lobby against. If it's not written in the platform, then they can't address it. The first amendment proposed language that says OSBA supports legislation that allows districts to charge for labor costs directly associated with receiving and fulfilling a public records request. So, the way it was written, it was clarified that this would possibly include staff and legal fees. This amendment was passed by the Delegate Assembly. The proposed Amendment Number Two added language that would state that OSBA supports legislation that requires school tax levy money, which has been voted upon, to be used for the funding of schools, be exempt from tax increment financing under Ohio Revised Code and Community Investment Act abatements. And additional language was added from the floor to include residential improvements, districts, and all other forms of abatements. And this amendment did pass. And the last amendment proposed from the floor was to add language that OSBA supports legislation that empowers local school boards to appoint the best qualified representatives to its joint vocational school district board. And the second part was OSBA opposes legislation that entitles appointees to joint vocational school district boards to terms that extend beyond their local term due to retirement, choice not to run, resignation, or loss in reelection. And this amendment did not pass. And that is it. You can let me know if you have questions.
I have an update from Dublin Education Foundation. Last week, we sat and listened to 11 applicants for fall grants. And these applicants came from all across the district, all levels, student groups, and even the Transportation Department. So, it just goes to show you that every single group within the school district really takes the health and well-being and learning of our students very seriously to try to get some very unique programs for our students. All grant proposals presented were awarded at least partial funding, with a total amount funded from DEF being $15,542. The amazing presentations from all the grant applicants with some really wonderful and innovative ideas to support our students, such as the purchasing of more pocket talks, to help communicate with our English learning students and parents, helping to fund students who are interested in a future career in health attend competitions through HOSA, revitalizing the greenhouse itself, and a printing press that uses Legos for graphic design. It was an inspiring night, and all the grant monies are going to be put to great use for our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Messick. It's been a little bit since I've sat on the DEF Board. How much are, what's their budget for the year? 15, if they're starting with just 15, just out of curiosity?
They had said that they could go up to 18, I think, so $36,000 for the entire year is what they were thinking. And I'd have to go back through my notes to double-check. They did not put forward all the money that they had set aside for the fall, thinking that some that were partially funded might come back with, once some suggestions had been made to them about further action to get more.
Fantastic.
For their programs.
Thank you.
I just have one committee update, and that is Business Advisory Council. And actually, I'm going to tie it into the OSBA presentation that Dublin gave on the pathways process. And that was Dr. Marshausen, Mr. Valentine, Kevin Patton, and Jen Hinderer, who gave that presentation. And although they drew a four o'clock time slot, and it wasn't that well-attended, the attendees were all very interested in what Dublin is doing. And the questions were great. They were astounded at the pathways that we have and just wanted to know, how do we do that in our district? How do we take something home and kind of recreate what you've done in Dublin? So, the Business Advisory Council is just an excellent way to showcase the partners that we have. At the last one that we had, we had Danus Construction. And I'm sure you guys are familiar that Danus is building the Mount Carmel Hospital that's right there at 270 and Sawmill Road. And they have, I don't know if you all remember, but they have this tent, or they used to, outside in the parking lot, and it's called an Industrialized Construction Center. So, they call it the ICC. Danus innovated this idea, and it's the second time that they've used it in a project. But the neat thing about that was, it's actually, it's two assembly lines within that tent. So, a left side and a right side, each working on different things. And what that does is free up the corridors and, you know, and the spaces within the hospital itself. So, they're able to work. They're able to work in inclement weather, and then they're able to take those finished products and bring them into the hospital. The bottom line for, you know, it's a big cell because it costs more upfront, but the goal is they shave about three to four months of construction time off projects. So, again, that cost is more than offset by the cost of the ICC. But I bring this up just because Danus is, you know, again, it's one of our partners, but it's amazing to have partners like we do, who innovate, who invite our students in to be a part of this. Show them what a, you know, production manager looks like or a project manager. Show them what, you know, what it looks like to construct these buildings. Go through, get their feet, you know, dusty and dirty, and see everything from start to finish. It's amazing. And it's just, you know, again, I think such a tribute to Dublin that we have such great partners, and we explore ways to even get better. So, that's it.
Thank you all for your updates. And we will move forward to Student Representative Update. And I love that you guys have name tags. This was a much-needed improvement.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, thank you again for the name tags. I walked up here and I was very surprised. It's awesome. In the past couple of weeks, each school's medical club have hosted very successful blood drives. At Kaufman, this past Friday, Kaufman football season ended after we lost to Centerville in Week 13 of the playoffs. Kaufman's NHS induction ceremony will be hosted this Wednesday at 7:00 PM in the PAC. December 5th through December 7th, Theater 3 will present Fools in the PAC at 7:00 PM. Moving over to Jerome, the production of James and the Giant Peach will happen November 21st and 22nd, as well as two shows on the 23rd at 1:00 PM and 7:00 PM. In this past week, on November 2nd, theater students competed at the Ohio Thesbian Fall Conference. Erica Raju, Amelia Lambert, and Elsa Westover earned excellent in musical theater, and Dylan Crabtree earned superior in solo acting, qualifying for the 2025 International Thesbian Festival. Congratulations to them. At Sciota, Sciota Boys Soccer are currently state semifinalists. The production, Inspecting Carol, will happen on December 6th through December 8th. December 7th, there will be a Santa Breakfast and Craft Fair at Sciota as well. Onto Emerald Campus, the DTA bake sale went well. All proceeds went to help pay for all the students to be able to attend the yearly Educators Rising Conference. In collaboration with Sciota's Purple Star Club, DTA makes cards for veterans, sending them their thanks and gratitude on Veterans Day. John, Kevin Patton, and college admissions experts on December 3rd, 2024, through 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM at Dublin Kaufman PAC for tips on college selection. This is open to all, and it is focused on grades nine through 11. And that is all we have.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mr. Wilkens, for coming. We are moving forward. Dr. Marshausen with your report.
Thank you. As expected, one of the most frequent topics in the community, especially when it comes to upcoming events, is the redistricting that we will be announcing at the December meeting for our elementary, middle school processes, and then the look ahead at what will be coming when it comes to high school. We posted a document, and we are grateful for the community's comments and feedback through Cropper GIS's website. We put a summary of those with some district responses to frequently asked questions that are now available for folks to see on our website. It's under the redistricting tab. It was also included in a recent newsletter. We are taking lessons learned from the elementary and middle school redistricting process, and we're reviewing that timeline for high school as we look at changes based on things that we've learned, the timing of events, and public feedback. There's been feedback about, do you want to provide maps during the summer months? Is that something when you look at timing? So, as we get ready to release the changes and the updated elementary and middle school maps, we'll also be looking at some potential changes for that timeline for high school. It will not affect the opening of the building, which Mr. Stark will talk about today. That will be ready in August of '26. And we'll still be ready there. We'll still be ready for schedules, but going to try to avoid some of those activities during the summer months. The responsible staffing plan is at the heart of what we do when we look at what Mrs. Marple is going to talk about, when we look at things that Mr. Boney and his team talk about, as we look at academic class offerings and schedule. Kudos to the academic team led by Mrs. Marple with the assistance of our technology team as we've had our high school and middle school principals and guidance counselors in what we call the sandbox, where we use last year's course requests and scheduling requests to look at how can we build schedules that are more efficient and effective for the upcoming school year. When we look at those class, those target class sizes versus maximums and minimums, when we look at rotation of some classes, we want to be consistent, we want to be upfront. We also want to make sure that we have staff where they're needed. Our goal, and the goal in the five-year forecast that was adopted at the last board meeting, is to stay off the ballot as long as possible. So, when we look at that 2023 levy that passed by 300 and some odd votes, our goal is to get to at least 28. And that's why we're making the staffing decisions that we're making. Yes, we're asking teachers to do more. Yes, there are going to be some students who don't get their first schedule requests. There are going to be some classes that rotate. It's things that we have to do in order to be responsible and understand the financial situation that we're in as a district and that the pressure our community feels when it comes to ballot issues and our tax rates. We're having fun in lame duck general assembly right now. I get daily updates on what's happening in Columbus. The college credit plus bill, which now includes the bathroom bill, is on the governor's desk. It's anticipated that the governor will sign that bill. The religious release policy legislation is on the fast track. We are where we need to be as a district. We have the religious release policy. It's in place, and that will become law likely by the end of this lame duck session. Parents' Bill of Rights is on a fast track. There's likelihood that that will come, which will impact our teachers and counselors as we talk with our students. And we're also awaiting changes to Senate Bill 29, which was well-intended legislation when it came to parent notification about some of the electronic tools we have, but had some flaws in how it was written. The sponsor has said that there'll be amendments to Senate Bill 29, which will likely get stuck onto some other bill as we work through this lame duck session. We're continuing to work with legal counsel, and as we've said, regardless of ideological preferences, we follow the law. So, as these laws change, we will make the necessary amendments or changes. Some of these could end up with some policy changes, and Dr. Schwanke and Jessica will work with the policy committee. There's a reason when we reconstituted Policy Committee, Chris, I think it was two cycles ago, that we have our attorney sitting on the policy committee with our board members and our administrators to make sure that our policies are in alignment with all of the legal requirements and such that we have. So, it's going to be a busy time. Right now, I didn't see any emergency clause on any of these bills, so it'll be 90 days after the governor signs them before they become law. We're grateful for our collaboration and partnership with the city of Dublin. We've recently, as board members and administrators, had the opportunity to sit down with the city officials, with their economic development team, to talk about changes that, and proposals that are hopefully going to take place at Metro Place. The vision for that, which has been rolled out publicly, if it comes to fruition in the next 10 years, will be awesome. This week, we have another city council, city and district liaison meeting on Wednesday. We'll be discussing swimming fees. I know that's something that has come up in a couple of different forums when we look at the charges that are for those lanes for our swim teams over at the rec center. We continue to work with Mr. Stark and his team on collaboration at Bishop Elementary. Yeah, there'll be a stoplight on Highland, Croy, and Casio there. That will be a shared cost between the district and the city. We are also somehow responsible for some roadwork there when it comes to making improvements to Casio before we get into the new elementary. And we're also, and this will be a topic on Wednesday with the city officials, looking at a couple of traffic studies when we look at the additions that we're going to put on our schools and what's the impact that that may have on certain traffic patterns and from certain neighborhoods. So, really grateful to the way this relationship, which was strong, has even gotten better over the past several months. Any questions from members of the board?
All right. If there are no questions, we just have to correct some technical errors of policy. So, it is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the attached policies for technical corrections. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. De Silva. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rigby. Mr. Kern, if you could call the roll, please.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gillis?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Reports and action items from the Treasurer's Office.
Pretty standard items on the
at the charges that are for those lanes for our swim teams over at the rec center. We continue to work with Mr. Stark and his team on collaboration at Bishop Elementary. Yeah, there'll be a stoplight on Highland, Croy, and Casio there. That will be a shared cost between the district and the city. We are also somehow responsible for some roadwork there when it comes to making improvements to Casio before we get into the new elementary. And we're also, and this will be a topic on Wednesday with the city officials, looking at a couple of traffic studies, when we look at the additions that we're gonna put on our schools, and what's the impact that that may have on certain traffic patterns and from certain neighborhoods. So really grateful to the way this relationship, which was strong, has even gotten better over the past several months. Any questions from members of the board?
If there are no questions, we just have to correct some technical errors of policy. So it is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the attached policies for technical corrections. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. De Silva. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rigby. Mr. Kern, if you could call the roll, please.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gillis.
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Reports and action items from the Treasurer's Office.
Pretty standard items on the agenda this evening. I'm gonna go over just a couple of them here. Over the donations, pretty self-explanatory there. I did send a list out to the board of the books that are being purchased with the Chapman PTO money for nonfiction books there. Our approval of our October financial report, this is based off the October five-year forecast. We are in line with estimates when it comes to a general fund or operating fund as the year goes. And approval, appropriation changes, I do wanna, we do have one small grant, a local grant that we did get for $5,000, but I did wanna talk about the self-insurance dental. This is not an increased cost. This is just a shifting of how we fund our dental insurance. Previously, we are already for health insurance and vision insurance, self-insured, which means essentially we pay the premiums that we normally would have paid to the insurance company. We pay them into our self-insurance fund, and they, the insurance company then will administer the claims out of that fund with that. Which comes with this is a lower cost for us, as if we finish better in a year, we get to keep the money in there and stuff, for example, and it helps us set the rates with it. So this is a good thing. This is just, we have to set up, by the way, our USAS accounting standards are, we have to set up into a separate fund, so we're appropriating that. This does not start till January 1st, as that's our new planned benefit year. So Delta Dental is our insurance carrier who will administer the claims, paid on behalf of our employees.
Thank you. If there are no questions, it's recommended by the Treasurer that the Board of Education approve items 7B through 7E. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Valentine. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Messick. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gillis.
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Department of Academics and Student Learning.
Okay. The main speaker tonight will be Mrs. Marple. She is going to go over our high school academic programs and pathways, book our first, excuse me, our first reading, but I'm going to go first, just to let you know what you'll be voting on tonight. First is the approval of payment for Dr. Jess Chatkin for his speaking services. He was here about a month ago to speak to our community about why teens take risks. Next, you will see approval of fee payment for Riddle Investigations. This is an annual topic that comes up on our board meetings. We pay Peter Riddle to go and investigate and verify residency, which is part of board policy that districts need to, Ohio revise code and board policy, that districts need to verify residency. Peter frequently, unfortunately, finds students who are not living in our district, and then we are able to ask them to withdraw and enroll in the district where they reside. We are trying to be more proactive, too, and this year we did actually find a lease that was suspect and then did not find that student eligible to enroll. This saves our district significant funds. As you can see there, almost a half a million dollars last year alone. So his services are well worth the cost. The next items that you will see for approval are for Dr. Sarah Trubridge and Dr. Brian Dinkins. This is for our February 14th Professional Development Day for teachers. So what, the topic of the, of the, of the day is resilience, and we have, as part of our Journey 2030 goals, we want to make sure that our students and our staff all have tools that will help them be mentally, excuse, excuse me, and physically healthy and balanced to achieve their goals. So because our district is so large, and because we want all staff members, certified staff, paraprofessors, professionals and office staff to hear these speakers, we need two of them, and we need them in two different sites. And so all of our employees will choose which speaker that they'd like to hear. And in each, each presentation will be slightly different, but all will kind of circle around this idea of resilience. Dr. Trubridge, for example, recently, or actually a few years ago, I think, published an article called "Resilience Begins With Beliefs: Building on Student Strengths for Success in School." So that's just one example of Dr. Trubridge and the work with how resilience and student focus and staff focus on resilience and perseverance help them succeed in school. So I'd like to give a huge shout out to Mr. Andres and his team for securing these speakers, and also Mrs. Marple, who worked with our November 5th PD Day, and we're gonna apply some of our lessons learned. Again, it's, it's a huge task to provide professional development to staff on these workdays, and they've done it beautifully with their teams. And again, the point here is to make sure that our teachers learn a little bit about how best to teach our students and then pass those lessons on to them. Any questions before I turn it over to Mrs. Marple? Okay, Lori, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Schwanke. Good evening, Board. Tonight, as stated earlier, I have our 2025-26 High School Academic Programs and Pathways document for your review. Prior to the start of the meeting, I provided a hard copy of the document in draft form for you, as well as a changes sheet that gives you an overview and page number reference. But I do want to give you a reminder that the document is intended to be navigated digitally, and it has multiple hyperlinks throughout, and also links out to the website for further information on certain topics. So know that as you peruse the document over the next month. There are some formatting changes. We did most of those last year. We did an overhaul, if you recall, last year. But this year, we did continue to update some regular formatting changes, dates, some course descriptions, just for clarity, without much content change. But you will see there that we have streamlined some of our prerequisites. We're looking for consistency across the departments, and so we did remove, in most cases, the words, quote, "teacher recommendation." It really doesn't change our practice in advisement. Our teachers do a fabulous job advising, but what we did notice is two things. One, in some professional development provided for our high school scheduling team by NSK-12, we heard from them that teacher recommendation really isn't a strong prerequisite for courses. It's actually better to list the actual knowledge and skills kids need to be successful. And also, we weren't applying that consistently across our departments, so we streamlined that in this version of what you'll see. I would like to take a few minutes tonight to overview some of the content changes so that you know what, what you're looking at and some of the reasoning behind those proposed changes. So I'm gonna start with some of our Emerald Campus programming. We started the process last year of working to make sure our IB program was sustainable and efficient. And in doing so, last year, we announced that there were a few courses that we're going to phase out due to low enrollment, and you can see those listed in the first three bullets. So there's nothing there that's new for this year. We were already working on that phase out last year for the HL level of global politics, biology, and then that math applications course. Our IB Literature and Performance class is going down to a one-year class, so that year two is being eliminated moving forward. And we will be adding the IB Sports Science HL, and this is because without that, the only HL option for students is HL Chemistry because of the bio. So that is a popular class. It connects to some of our academy work, and actually will be co-seeded with the current IB Sports Science class that we have, but helps round out that IB diploma experience for students. Moving on to College Credit Plus, during the pandemic, many of our embedded College Credit Plus course offerings went virtual. A lot of what Columbus State offers went virtual. We continued to keep those, some of those virtual courses in our course handbook, wondering if they might come back to be in person, but those are maintained by Columbus State, they're taught by Columbus State professors, and they continue to add more courses to their list. So we just lifted that, those out of our academic programs because they're not sponsored by us, but it changes no access that students have. They just register those, like all the other CCP classes, through Columbus State. And then you can see that there's some course description changes for our calculus offerings due to some changes with Columbus State, and to provide clarity to the students taking those courses. Moving on to the academies, which is probably the largest section of adjustments, with the onboarding of Gen Hinderer and some work we've been doing both with TOLES and thinking about that responsible staffing plan, and making sure that we're offering the programs that the students need, want, and offering the pathways that help students have exposure to the areas that both their interest and aptitude along, aligned to. We've made some adjustments. So you'll notice that in this proposed program book, that Logistics and Supply Chain Academy and our Dublin Leadership Academy have been eliminated. Students would still have options to look in both of those, work in both of those areas through our expanded internship program, which I'll talk about in a moment. Media Marketing Academy, which is one of our TOLES satellites, you'll see a change from Columbus State to Clark State credit. That is a TOLES change due to teacher certification of the TOLES teacher who teaches that. And the content will shift to more of a video production focus in that academy. Moving on to Dublin Teacher Academy, we provided some clarification about some things already a part of that program, including the pre-apprenticeship. And I'll mention this three times tonight with three of our academies. Actually, maybe I'll just say them all together. Dublin Teacher Academy, our Hospitality Academy, which was formerly called Travel and Tourism, we're doing a name change there to focus on what, what students are really doing and the coursework they're doing in there. And on the reverse side of the page, your Aviation Academy. All of those three academies have something called College Technical Assurance Guides Credit attached. And after conversation with Dr. Marshausen and some discussion internally with our team, those academies are going to have a weighted grade attached to them. They are college-level coursework, and as you know, CCP, AP, and IB are also weighted. So this puts that same emphasis on our Dublin programming and, and really kind of level sets college-level rigor. Additionally, you'll see that we've added CCP credit. There's an optional CCP credit in that Hospitality Academy. And then on the reverse side, I want to talk a little bit about our IT and cyber academies. In the past, our IT academy has been a TOLES satellite. Moving forward, this is a pathway that we know is important in the state of Ohio. We also really wanted to make sure that all students have access. In doing so, we're gonna continue to have year one out in the three high schools. Students can engage in now two different semester courses during a year of high school or a semester their freshman year and a second semester their sophomore year as prerequisites for year two. And we are, in a way, condensing IT and cyber. They are different branches of the technical world, and students can be interested in one or both. So we're hoping that we can have one teacher teach cyber and IT, separate out the content, and give students more choice and access as they go through that pathway. We're really excited about the alignment of that and what it might offer our students in the future. I can imagine that down the road, we might be integrating C-Tags, those College Technical Assurance Guides, into that course as well. You can see the C-Tag note there with aviation. And then the remaining, the other two, biomed and health professionals, we're really just articulating some credit pieces. Health professionals, as you know, was new this year, and now that we've been in it, we're working on making sure we're articulating the credits in the way that Ohio Health and Columbus State designed the academy for us, and it's been a great collaboration with them, and I think our students are having a positive experience in there. The last piece is really about internship. We've spent some time thinking about how we can get more students into field experience opportunities. And we think that over the next few years, we've come up with a model that's going to, we hope, double the number of students taking internship. We previously had YPA and our co-op both housed here at Emerald Campus, and YPA's been wildly popular over the last 20 years in Dublin city schools, and it's evolved over time and taught us a lot about what that professional internship experience can be like for students. Our co-op has been a little harder to get off of the ground, and part of that is because not all students who need that internship while in high school have the time in their schedule to travel to Emerald Campus. In response to that, what we are doing is moving the co-op out to the three high schools, hoping that we will have a teacher in the three home high schools that will work with the YPA teacher here, because that YPA teacher is building a really good partners. And we will work collaboratively across the district to ensure that students who want to have an internship placement as a part of their schooling can do that. And I'm excited about that opportunity for students who may not either have the ability or the time in their schedule to travel and be here at Emerald Campus. And then finally, we have a small change in social studies. We've adjusted the AP Modern World History grade levels to include ninth grade as a choice for our freshman students. International Diplomacy was removed due to low enrollment. It was not running at all of our schools, but also the curriculum that we were using is no longer available. I would imagine that during the social studies curriculum review, we'll need to look at that and see if there's a possible replacement or change that needs to come down the pipeline in the future in collaboration with our teachers. As you know, last March, legislation was passed in regards to financial literacy. We aren't changing our financial literacy course. We are moving it into our wellness department because it's now a standalone high school graduation, much like health is, much like PE is. So we are encompassing that as physical, mental, and financial wellness as a priority for all students. It doesn't change who teaches the course. We now code financial literacy simply as its own subject area of financial literacy due to this legislation. And then the other change is that the law required us to include free-market capitalism in that curriculum. That was already there in Dublin. We were ahead of the game on that piece. And AP Econ now can count as a student's financial literacy credit. So to address that, you'll see AP Econ still in the social studies department, but the new guidelines prohibit, now this is confusing, so stick with me, it prohibits students from using their financial literacy as a social studies credit. So AP Econ can count by law, but a social studies credit cannot be awarded. So the state has something called simultaneous credit, which allows a student to sit in one class and get credit for two different things, and that's how we have decided to address this. Students will get a 1.0 AP Econ credit, and if, if they're in that class and need that financial literacy, they will get a simultaneous financial literacy .5 credit. And then the final changes, we updated the honors diploma requirements based on ODU's changes for the class of 2026. We knew those were coming, but they go into effect with next year's seniors. We articulated CCP, schedule change procedures. Where, as we see more students engage in College Credit Plus, it's important for us to articulate what that looks like when they don't find success or want to make a change in their schedule, because that is a different timeline than the high school timeline and causes some confusion for both parents, students, and our staff from time to time. And then finally, we updated the credit flexibility and early graduation deadlines for our community. As a reminder, this is to read, so there's no action tonight. The action would be proposed on this for the December board meeting. I am more than happy to take questions now or over the next few weeks as we prepare for the December board meeting.
I have a couple of questions. The C-Tag for weighted grades, also with C-Tag, do students earn college credit? And if so, what do they earn college credit for?
So the college credit would be in the area of study. So for example, what it is, it's a college assurance guide. So it's only good at Ohio colleges, much like CCP. And in education, this would cover their Education 101. So for each academy, it's really up to the college to look at the C-Tag and determine what it's equivalent to there. And students actually sit for an exam to get that assurance guide, much like AP. They sit for an exam.
Okay. And then the econ with financial literacy, the curriculum for financial literacy, has that been included into the AP curriculum? Because they are, economics and finance are completely different.
Yeah. Thank you for asking that. So we had a team of teachers come together. Our AP Econ is the macro and the micro combined. Some schools do it differently. And our AP teachers, there's some components that won't be a part of the AP, but they'll be able to fit them in after the AP exam.
Ah, thank you. That's what I was asking.
I just had, I had one question, and you touched on it. My question was about the removal of teacher recommendation.
Yeah.
And I understand what you were saying, that, you know, it can be inconsistent. But what happens if you have a student who thinks they want to be on this AP track, but the teacher who knows them well knows that it may not be the best idea for them?
Great question. So we always talk with our counselors and our teachers about having the conversations. In many cases, there is actual firm prerequisites in the book. So you'll see places where there is recommended coursework leading up to. We have what's called advisement week, where students and teachers spend time in class the week before scheduling, talking about the courses. Teachers often meet one-on-one. There's times where a teacher may even talk to a student, find out the student's desire is different than maybe what the teacher's seeing that student's work be in class, and they may have a conversation with the parents. Oftentimes, that conversation isn't to convince them they can or cannot take that course. There's appropriate times for kids to really push themselves outside of their comfort zone, and we know that it's not just about them being interested, and it's not just about them having aptitude. We know that both of those matter, right? That interest can overcome aptitude, and aptitude can overcome interest. So nothing changes really about how our teachers should interact with their students in preparation, and we encourage our parents to ask questions of the teacher. What we want to prevent is putting up unnecessary gates for students to have access to courses that are appropriate for their pathway. Yeah, you're welcome.
I, can I, I have a question. How, kind of how and when are you going to start presenting this information, like such as large changes as YPA now being offered at all three? I would, I would think that would be something that would significantly change a student's thought process. So just kind of thinking, I know we're not voting on this tonight, but thinking ahead to, I know we talked previously about trying to get scheduling so they had more time prior to winter break. So what's that rollout look like?
So first clarify, I would like to clarify, YPA stays at Emerald Campus, but there's a co-op internship opportunity that will be at the three high schools.
Yes.
And I could see some students maybe doing both, right? But your question about how are we managing the change in the district? Our principals have all given input into changes, here at Emerald Campus included. Julie Blevins here has also. And we've already had a lot of conversations with our department chairs and our teachers. So in the example you've given, that teacher's been a part of the conversation. We'll continue to work on the transition plan over the next six months. We'll be working with our counselors over the next two weeks. Following this read tonight, I have an appointment with each counseling team. I'll be kind of traveling around the district to talk through these changes with our counselors between the first read and the approval, so that we are prepared to go into January scheduling season.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and if you have further questions, please let me know.
It's recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve items 9A through 9D as their motion.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Messick and second by Mrs. Rigby. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gillis.
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Department of Operations.
Good evening. We have three items for your review and approval. The first one is, this is an industrial parkway in Mitchell de Witte where we have about 100 acres. We currently, the board currently has a lease with a farmer there to take care of the land, and every year we have to renew the lease. This is an addendum that would give us an automatic renewal, would still give us an easy out both ways, but ensures that we don't miss this lease at all. It also has a couple of minor provisions about the notices. It's important that we continue to farm this land. It not only keeps maintenance of the land, but it avoids any further wetland issues that we would have in the future. So that's the first one. The second one, we're excited to announce this, this is about the Jerome Track. This is a, as you've heard throughout the communications and my reports, this is basically building Jerome's Track from scratch. All the testing done on it is there's nothing left underneath. So we are, we publicly bid this. We have three qualified bids. Byrne and Jones Construction came in with the most competitive bid at about 1.1 million, and we're also asking for a contingency authorization of $228,000. And that work would begin promptly on May 1st, and we're hoping for substantial completion by September 1st. Lastly, and this is with our Souda Edition project, are hiring a construction manager at risk, and we are recommending Robertson Construction. Robertson not only had the best value, but they also had the lowest price amongst the three competitors. The district has had good luck with Robertson. Robertson was the CMR hired for the building envelope project across the street at Kaufman that redid all of their paneling. That was kind of a complex project. Robertson also was the CMR on our athletic facilities, the multi-hitting facility over at Kaufman, Souda, the Kindness Cafe at Souda, and the weight room. So, and locally, they are, they do lots of work at Owen Tangi as far as building new elementary schools and things such as that nature. So we're excited to bring them on. What you'll be approving tonight is a resolution that approves their pre-construction fee only of about 25,000 and allows us, for that fee, to finish negotiations with them. We hope to have them under contract by end of this week. And then all their other expenses would be brought to the board every time we would bring you a GMP as far as the project goes. And those are the three items, if there's any questions.
No questions. Thank you so much. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve items 11A through 11C as their motion.
So moved.
So I'm trying not to cough, sorry. Mrs. Rigby and second, Mr. Valentine. Human Resources.
Call the roll.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gillis.
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Now for Human Resources.
Mrs. Gillis, I'd like to thank Mr. Stark, Michael Ring, and Mr. Schwanke for the work that we're going to need to do with the Jerome Track project. As Mr. Stark mentioned, it's going to start on May 1st, and the goal is to be done by September 1st. I know there are some spring sports parents who would like us to start on June 1st, but that would mean that we wouldn't be done until October 1st, which would likely upset our boys and girls soccer parents, our football parents, and our field hockey parents. So as we looked at what the four months are going to take to get this project done, we were intentional, there were lots of conversations about how do we least impact both seasons? And I know we are incredibly blessed to have three turf stadiums with lights, and when it comes to tournament season at the end of the year, we will still be able to play lacrosse games in Dublin. We may have to welcome our friends from Jerome at Kaufman or Souda and their stadiums when it gets to tournament time. When our track athletes at the very end of the season are preparing for regionals and states and those meets at the end of the year, as the teams condense, we may have to have some practices at other people's tracks. We're also fortunate to have five middle schools that finish track pretty early, and 400 meters is 400 meters. So as you look at where you're practicing, we're blessed to have those facilities. So all three of our A.D.s and our teams will work together to make it as seamless as possible. But this is a project that, when you're looking at a track that will crumble if we don't do anything to it now, because the base is falling apart. It's a complete rebuild. And Mr. Stark will tell you, I pushed him when he brought me this timetable. I was not pleased with this timetable. So we've checked with all of the companies on, this has to be done, and it's going to take four months. So we're ready, and we'll make it as seamless as possible for those athletes.
Could I just ask one question on that? Is there, maybe there already is one, but on our DCS webpage, is there a kind of in-the-know on the track timeline, why it's four months, why we're starting May 1st?
Yeah. If it hasn't been published, it's coming, because we've written it.
I think it's going to be out either today or tomorrow. I think Cassie has written something, and she's got all the data.
Good evening, members of the board. I'll start us out tonight in the HR section on the certified agenda, and you're going to see more retirements than normal in November. It's, November's typically a heavy month for retirements because of the evaluation timeline changes for that month, but there's also been some changes in STRS around un-reduced benefits and age. So we have 10 retirements on tonight, and I'll just briefly mention those 10 folks and yours they have in the district. So I have Jennifer Burton, she's going to leave Thomas Elementary with 34 years in the district. Brenda Fields, 26 years at Indian Run. Thomas McCauley is going to retire from Sales with 34 years in our district. Chris McManus with Daniel Wright with 23 years in Dublin. Mark Massaro's 34 years, he's currently at Kaufman. Mary Power will retire from Thomas Elementary with 33 years in our district. Ben Shaw retires from Souda with 26 years. Josie Stewart with 19 years in Dublin from the DCS preschool. Ben Stratton retiring from Sales Middle School with 29 years in Dublin. And then Becky Tate will exit Riverside with 19 years in our district. And so those changes came out last week, and with that, we have some folks that have decided to retire because of those changes in STRS and retirement eligibility. Moving on, you'll see a salary change from an earlier approved board item, and then a replacement contract, and that is for Kristen Freistack. She is somebody who jumped in quickly at Abraham Depp due to a school year resignation that we had in September. She's done a terrific job with the students in the classroom, and so we have a contract on for her tonight. You'll see three unpaid leave of absences. These are different time periods and lengths of time, but anytime we have one that's more than five days in length, we bring those to the board for approval. The next items are resignations and salary changes of pupil activity contracts, and then there's a handful of contracts for athletics, extracurricular clubs, and academic items as well. The last item in this section is for ski club, specifically the approval of the coordinator, advisors, and adult chaperones for that. And then moving on to our classified agenda, you'll see two resignations and one retirement. Samuel Graham will be retiring as a head custodian with 16 years in our district. Then you'll see eight new hires and several salary changes and a few leave of absences on the agenda. One of the new hire recommendations may be familiar, Mr. Joe Sanema retired not too long ago as an assistant principal in Dublin, and he's coming back as a preschool instructional That was great.
That was good timing.
That was perfect timing. I'm going to start using that. The last item is, are the stipends, and there are seven stipends on tonight. The first two are revisions, and they are previously approved by you. One's for the resident educator program, and the other is the CAR DC trip. These are on to correct dollar amounts and then correct staff members accordingly. The next stipend is for staff members that are supporting our first-year certified teachers and making sure they successfully acclimate to our district. And then those final items are programs designed to help our students who are new to high school or to help special ed students receive support from their peers during their high school journey in Dublin schools. And that concludes the HR portion tonight.
Thank you. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve items 13A through 13C as their motion.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Valentine. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. De Silva. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gillis.
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Items for, for discussion or future agenda items, anything anybody wants to add? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Rigby, second by Mrs. Messick. De Silva. De Silva.
De Silva.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving, you guys.